...subdivision. In fact, we have Ms. Truitt, she is our H O A secretary. We've both been here for about fifteen years in the community. I'm an advocate for our communities. We really involve our communities. I actually teach at Fulton County myself and the community, so I'm very well around it as far as the community is involved. My like to thank this council member for allowing us the opportunity to have a host of this event, like we can honestly use the opportunity to see two. But what we're looking for in our community and what we want in our community from the candidates, so we appreciate you all coming out this evening. So we're gonna keep this going. I like to start on time and I like to finish on time, so we're ten minutes behind, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. I want to welcome the candidates today. What we're gonna do is we're gonna give you a minute to introduce yourselves. I will try to be thorough and trust me, if you didn't like last year, this time when it goes off, I have to stop and make sense. So give them to introduce themselves, then after that minute is up, then we'll go to the next candidate. Then we have opportunity for the audience to ask questions. After those questions are asked, then you'll have a minute to respond. Are there any questions? So if you can, you can start right here. You have one minute, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to come up. I'm Dr. Sony Francis Roll. I'm an educator, entrepreneur, business lady. I've been involved in the city of South Fulton since I've been in Georgia for the past twenty years. I lived here in this area about thirteen, fourteen years. I'm a member of South Fulton Chamber, Air Metropolis, Atlanta. We've been participating in all of the Fulton County activities, court watch, I participated in Citizens University, I participated in Fulton County Police Academy, Sheriff Academy, all those things I did because I didn't realize I was gonna be running for this seat. But I'm so involved and so interested in the community that I decided on a first move in those are the things I wanted to do. Again, my name is Dr. Sony Francis Roll. I'm educator, entrepreneur. I raised four grown children. I live in the Hampton North subdivision. I married Dr. Gordon Roll, who's a teacher in Barracca High School, and we thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Joe Carr. I'm a native of Fulton County. I grew up in East Point. I currently live in College Park, myself and my wife. I'm a father of three grown children. I'm a grandfather as well. I'm a proud community citizen. I got into College Park and started as a community activist and worked my way up to becoming a council member, from there to Vice Mayor of the City of College Park, and hopefully on to your next Council Commissioner in September. I have been trained and experienced in public affairs. I've gone to many, many trainings. It includes Fulton County Citizens University, Harvard University, JFK School of Government, renovations in governance programs, National League of Cities certification for ten years, and Georgia Municipal Association as well. I'm very well versed in government. I've managed the large budgets and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and serve as I've been serving the people for many years with great results in College Park. We've made lots of progress and we're gonna keep the progress going. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gordon Head. I am one of the candidates for this District Commission seat. I am born and raised in the Atlanta area. Born and raised in the Atlanta area, graduated from Marshall University here in Atlanta. Have worked in retail industry for over thirty-three years. Have been insurance agent for over six years. Most of my work has been in an area of sales and customer service, working with people. My advocacy work has been in one of the roughest neighborhoods in the city of Atlanta, Pittsburgh. Most of you know the issues that has come with that community, as it changes, as it continues to change as the Beltline comes through. One of the things that I advocate for is people. I believe that people should understand what is happening around them, that the representatives should be there talking to them, getting them information, and making sure that they're in the way. It's counted in the decisions that they make when they go to do things for people. That, to me, is critical. We cannot have representatives who go and make decisions without consulting those that they represent. That is part of my platform. I feel that the individual that takes this seat should be listening to you, understanding what your needs are, and implementing that into the policies that are made for those particular areas that you live in. Your quality of life is the most important thing when you talk about the individual that's running for this seat. They're making decisions for you. They work for you, and it's important that they understand that they should be reporting to you in whatever decisions they make. And that said, I thank you so much for allowing me, excuse me, allowing you to come and be with you today, and I'm looking forward to talking with you later. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna first thank my makeup artist, because everyone has given me a compliment. So I have a makeup artist. Thank you, thank you. So I'm not too easy. I probably got dolled up like this. I had something for my company. We had some juice today. But I have a makeup of Atlanta, a makeup district seat for thirty-four years. I have been in my community and serving. I have been affected by my community personally and professionally, and I have a process of our system. I started at Ben Hill Elementary School, Ben Hill Little League, and then moved on to St. Paul of the Cross, and then eventually the ladies have graduated. So I'm a multi-career. Today, I'm just here to let you know who I am. I'm just a fresh face for the city of South Fulton, giving you all a change, something that is desperately giving here, a change in a new direction for the city of South Fulton, and giving South Fulton a lot more diversity. For one thing, I would definitely say about myself, I am a bridge builder. I make sure that I build relationships with the next people. And the one thing that I do in real estate, which is my job at Home Depot here, is that I make sure that people make the right decision for the best, the biggest investment that they make, and that's choosing not just a house for the community. Everyone is passionate about what community they're part of. They're passionate about the safety. They're passionate about what the community can do for them and how they can grow in their community. So for all of that, I have that experience and that knowledge, and I will bring that to District Six. So I just ask that on September the seventeenth, if there is early voting, that you come out and you make sure that you vote for your single program. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good to see all of you. My name is Sojourner Maribel Griffin, and I'm the daughter of Dr., the late Dr. Landon Maribel and Hazel Hannah Harris. I am thrilled to be here, happy to talk with all of you. My background includes local government. I work for Fulton County Government. It includes senior services, and it also includes higher education. I'm currently the Director of External Affairs for National Church Residences, which is a global housing developer. I like the ringtone. And so in my role, I serve twelve hundred seniors every day in our eight communities. When I worked for Fulton County Government, I served as the Director of Constituent Services for the former Chairman John R. Eads. And in my role, what I'm passionate most about is not just people, but connecting people to services. And I've been doing that for over twenty years. I've lived in South Fulton for about fifteen years, and in the county as a whole for over twenty years. I lived off Cascade Road for about thirteen, and now I'm off Enon for about two. I'm here with my college sweetheart. We went to Clarkett Nemesis for undergrad, and I went on to Penn State for grad school. We have two young boys. Do we have any Sandtown former football players here? No?
My son.
Your son? Come on, come on, represent Sandtown. My boys play at Sandtown baseball and also football. I'm so glad to be here. I would appreciate your vote on September seventeenth. Go to electsojourner.com. Thank you so much again for being here today.
Good evening, everyone. Great to see you guys again. My name is Rafer Johnson, and I am putting my fifty-three years of life experience and thirty-four years of successful business, government, and community leadership on the ballot and asking you to consider me for your next Commissioner of Fulton County. I've worked in this community for over twenty years, starting with the H O A president off of Old National Highway. I've represented Fulton County on the Atlantic Beltline. I've served as Chairman and Housing Commissioner for the Housing Authority of Fulton County, just to name a few of the things that is involved. And many of you know, involved in leadership that helped found the city of South Fulton. I'm very proud of that record and the work that I've done in the community. I'm offering up myself and my experience. The three focus areas I want to focus on, and we've talked to you, and there's many more, you'll find that on my website, raferjohnson.us, easy one to find. And we've talked about quality of life, infrastructure, and economic development. We have to take care of our seniors, and I continue to work around that. Absolutely, they'll have to navigate with me. But our average age in this district is thirty-five, and that, we have to make sure we also protect the environment for the future of our children. And I'll be absolutely doing that. I drive electric car, pay for solar panels, and I recycle. I hope all of you consider recycling. It's easy here in South Fulton. So as we look forward, the next area is economic development. We have got to protect this gender we have. I'm a leading time of leadership Atlanta graduate, and trust me, they are coming for the Southern Crescent. And the decision we have to make is are we gonna be at the table or on the menu? And choosing the right leadership to be there is really critical and important. And when it comes to econo-, and infrastructure, you guys know some of the challenges that we have today. We have to figure out how we tackle the traffic issues we have now. And I talked about BRT a long time ago. That's started to come into fruition. But it's not just about now. We have to think about the future. The tons of cars, the tons of trucks are coming. What do we do to be ready for that? Think about every new gas station putting in electric chargers to accommodate all of the manufacturers, all of them are going electric. So just some of that future thinking. So Rafer Johnson, offering you an ethical, experienced, visionary leader for the future of District Six. I ask for your consideration in your vote. Thank you.
Hello, my friends. Let me get on your side of the stage. I'm not trying to stand in front of anybody. I'm Gordon Jordan. Gordon, great to see you. Another Gordon. I am so happy to be here with you this evening, and I know my joy and my passion, my excitement, and my enthusiasm show because I believe in public service. I'm not just talking theory. I'm not just saying what I want to do, what I hope to do, what I've been trained to do. I'm telling you what I've done. I have served this community as a judge on the Atlanta Municipal Court, appointed by Mayor Andrew Young. After that, I served this community as Director and Chief Register of the Fulton County Board of Elections and Voter Registration, appointed to that position by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. This was after graduating from Morehouse College, Ann Arbor Law School with degrees, not just two-week certificates. There are some questions that you should be asking our candidates about their school background. Then I went on to Fulton County Board of Commissioners, and I served this community as a Fulton County Commissioner, a church member, served the Baptist Church. I served this community as a Fulton County Commissioner. There will be an opportunity to talk about what I have done for this community, for the senior citizens, building multipurpose senior citizen centers for children, creating sucker jobs. That was a fascinating testimony. We'll get a chance to talk some more, but you honor us, you honor all of us by being here this evening. And to the elected official, to the council member, Gil Yard there, any other, I see another public official, former public official in the back, Stephanie Randolph, worked for the state and worked for Fulton County. And we all, all of you, have provided service for your community. I see the whole Johnston family here this evening. Was it general, major, colonel?
Sergeant.
Sergeant First Class. Everybody give Sergeant Johnson a hand. He has retired from serving. Talk to you some more. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. We're gonna go ahead and turn it over to the audience. Any questions? Like I said, we'll give the audience opportunity to ask questions, and then we'll give the candidates opportunity to answer the question. We're gonna have to really stick to that one-minute timeframe, or else we're gonna keep going over and noticing that we're going over. So I just wanna make sure that we kind of honor our time and just respect our time for people here and people that are responding.
Good afternoon, my name is Mr. Johnson. Good afternoon, my name is Mr. Johnson. I live in southwest Atlanta on a beautiful street called Catibo Drive, beautiful southwest Atlanta. I have a question for Mr. Johnson. You may have come in a few seconds ago during your introduction that "they" are coming. I would like to know who are "they" that you refer to? And number two, you talked about economic development. Give us a few ideas, thoughts, and concepts that you have for economic development and for economic development, economic development for individuals who look like us to be presenting in the programs that South Fulton has offered for us.
Now, you know we're gonna have to talk afterwards a minute if we can't fit that.
Well, I'm sure you mean this.
But the opportunity, I believe I said the leadership and I don't know that. I've seen developed presentations on what people look like. For example, the model for the Atlanta Airport is shipyard airport. I literally came from there this morning. I took pictures and I'll share them on my Facebook page a little bit later, and took a little video about what it looks like. PricewaterhouseCoopers has an office in Rockland Shipperville Airport. I'll put that up. That's what they're looking at. So they're looking at changing the entire Southern Crescent of here. The standard airport has drawn a U line. Everything in that reach, they're planning for whole new development, live, work, play, business development, because they simply can't build one on the north side. That's where the opportunity becomes. Economic development, we have to work with our sister cities. That's where I plan to partner with the sister cities, the nine sister cities, and/or international sister cities. We haven't taken advantage of that relationship that is already there. And so when we step up to risk, working with our local governments, all nine of them, we have the opportunity to get engaged. But I'll talk more about that later. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Gordon McKee out in District Six, the bottom of Old National, I call it. So this question's for Mr. Jordan.
Sounds like my very good friend and former mother-in-law, taking Gordon Joyner.
Excuse me, because someone, you know, here you say my name is McKee, but it's McKee, so I do understand.
It's McKee, thank you.
I would like to know what plans you have for my area. I live in the bottom, I call it Old National Highway, Creole area. So I'd like to know what plans you have for that area for the next ten years, please.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that question. Old National Highway should be one of the glittering, golden thoroughfares of Fulton County. There should be no better boulevard in Alpharetta or Roswell or Sandy Springs than Old National Highway should be. It's proper economic development, not just throwing call centers, not just throwing warehouses off of Old National and across South Fulton. It's proper economic development. There is some leadership to do that. I can be that leadership on the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. I have been there and done that. What you see in Alpharetta and Roswell right now, in North Fulton County, I was part of developing it to look that way. I love Old National Highway. I have many friends who live in Beth Sater Road and Flat Shores, the entire area. My son and I are gonna be on Old National Highway flashing my signs at the corner of Flat Shores and Old National very soon. It's economic development. I'm gonna close with this. Do you know what makes people want to do quality economic development in a community? Public safety. People have to feel safe. And I'm gonna come back and talk about my plans for public safety enhancement across District Six. Thank you. Ms. McKee.
Good evening. I'm Jose Wright. I'm in District Four, the city of South Fulton. And I've only been here about five years now, but there's some startling needs in our community. I'm seeing that our city is inundated with adjacent jurisdictions, putting up warehouses where the dumping grounds for environmental justice challenges.
You're preaching to the choir.
So we also have municipalities that are putting them in our back corners, in our backyards, affecting our property values. From a regional integrational perspective, what can you do to ease, particularly Union City putting up more warehouses near our backyard?
Warehousing has been a problem for many years across the Southern Crescent. There are a lot of issues that go into that. According to the A R C, Atlanta Regional Commission, a lot of the development is coming south metro because of the space, the fact that we have sixty, seventy thousand developable acres along the South Fulton corridor. So in a sense, there are businesses coming, but they may not be the type of businesses we're interested in. Two reasons why there's a proliferation of warehousing. Number one, the Savannah ports, the seaports, they have been deepened to close to fifty feet, so they're gonna be deep water ports, which can bring in Panamanian ships. These are some of the largest sale investors in the world. These warehouses have been planned for twenty years into the future because they know those shipments are coming in. The second reason is internet sales. Every year, less and less retail brick and mortar stores have sales and more internet sales are going on. When we click those buttons, we have to be careful because another goes clicks, the more warehouses we get in our community. So we wanna try to buy low for as much as we can.
I want to respond to that as well. I honestly believe that we have all the cities together. I'm not gonna say that we can't do anything about it. We have eight cities in this area. Connect South Fulton is an organization that came together to try to talk and bring all the mayors within the area to realistically have a discussion about how we are going to plan for our community and our area. We had a problem with that because all the cities were putting money into that organization so that we have a representation of a person going out and looking for, and their job was to go out and find businesses that would come in to make this area, not only we're gonna work and plan, working with the schools, partnering with the Air Trunkless, and some of those organizations of which I sit on those committees. So the thing that we need to go back and look at in order to address the things that we need in our area, we need to address bringing the mayors together and really having a discussion about each and every city and what we need to do per city.
I would just have to say to bring that to the warehouse and things that are coming to our community is an issue, and they have attracted traders to come through the neighborhood. It's because nobody has, not enough people are standing up in our community, and we all have to do that. And that's to make sure that we build relationships with the council member, the other commissioners, not just in South Fulton, but in North Fulton. We have to make sure that we change the narrative in our neighborhoods and make sure that we have the engagement of the community. And that's one of the issues that I feel that we have in the neighborhood, and I want to make sure that we, and just like Rafer mentioned before, the average age now is thirty-five. We need everybody to come out to the homeowners association meeting. We need everybody to come out to all the board, board meetings and the code enforcement meetings, the M P U meetings, to make sure that we are counted and we're heard so that we can't look in the backyard and say, let me go ahead and sell before they finish putting up a warehouse, and it's too late.
So to answer your question, I've met with Mayor Union City pastor, and raised a very good streak with him. It is what it is, so certainly great. We let that happen. And I'm saying "we" because when we didn't incorporate earlier, we left our doors open. It's done now. It is what it is. What is really good is that I'm really impressed upon him that while that's on the back end of this city, it's on the front door of ours, and we need to work together. He listens, and he's set up a commission to actually look at where we, how we can do things here. I gave him models that I posed back when I was running for mayor. The models, there's warehouses that don't look like warehouses, that don't feel like warehouses. They actually have live, work, play in front of them, and you operate them differently. Their models out of California just are successful. Delta Airlines has a warehouse in downtown Alpharetta. You would not know it was a warehouse. So there's opportunity around that. So that's the opportunity, having those kinds of conversations upfront, building it out, right, and then looking at economic impact, the environmental impact on the trucks. That's another way. Thank you.
Folks, I'm gonna tell you straight up. You as citizens in that community have to fight. I live at two eighty-five Cascade Road. The street I live on is Shantre Trail. There's approximately seven acres of land that sits directly behind my house. They've been trying to develop that for the last twenty-five years. When the covenant ran out in nineteen seventy, that put that particular piece of land out where it can be redeveloped. It was twenty years. You have to fight because we have been to the county for the last ten to fifteen years fighting them about that very issue. We have stopped Kroger for putting the gas station there. We have stopped QuickTrip and several other developers who wanted to come and develop just that small spot of land. You've got approximately fifty houses that range from anywhere from two hundred fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars. If a development of that nature goes in there, it's gonna drop the profit. You have to fight. We had to pull former residents who built rooms to help stop them, and that covenant stated that you could not do that kind of thing. So you have to fight, and you have to tell the commissioners that their job is to make sure that it happens. Sir, come up here, please. Come up here for a second. I want you to, I want you to ask your question again, so you can get a direct answer.
If you answer it, I'll come up.
Come on up. Come on down.
My question is basically, from a commissioner's perspective, working with the mayors and the councils of the jurisdictions in our area, how do we get development that is not going to negatively impact some communities over other communities in different jurisdictions?
Does everybody hear the question?
Yes.
It's a very simple answer, and the answer's in your hands. If your local government, be it the Fulton County Commission, be it a city government, is not addressing your needs, because it's very easy. It's called a comprehensive land use and zoning plan. That's the bottom line. If your local government, your elected officials, will adopt and enact a comprehensive land use and zoning plan which lays down the law about where warehouses can go, where dumping grounds can go, where mixed-use development, commercial, retail, residential can go, it has to be in compliance with the comprehensive zoning plan. Now, I said it's in your hands. If you'd let people to office who do not reflect your priorities and you leave them there, you're faulted. Thank you.
I was gonna say, one point, they do have forums that are actually on my line of figures out of Fulton County, and I think that's the biggest thing, is making sure that people are engaged. You make sure that you are heard, and they're doing a great job of being proactive about that to change the, that we have here.
The challenge is, I can't go to Union City and get a, you know, a couple of minutes. It's all time. And they're making decisions in their jurisdiction, but in our backyard that's negatively impacting us. So I'm asking for someone at the county level to work with others in the region at the municipal level to look at an integrated, comprehensive approach so that we're not putting warehouses across the street or next door to another elementary school, a middle school, a high school. We're not building more warehouses, you know, to make our area the place to dump, because if you look at the health issues of the diesel fuel, and our children asthma.
That goes back, just quickly to the bottom of that. That goes back to what I said earlier about it is very, very, very important that we get to bring all the mayors within our area. Benjamin, Union City has its own plans. We have several different people from different cities that have, the city of South Fulton now, they're zoning to make sure that they look at bringing in businesses. So we have to have a force and a body. So I'm looking at what would I do as a commissioner to bring all the mayors together? They're going to Palmetto and they put in warehouses in Palmetto. I was so disappointed. I was so disappointed. They took the airport, and they took it apart. And I said to the mayor of Palmetto, what are you guys doing down here? We can't continue to do this. The problem that we're having, and we are missing that link, like what you're saying, bring the mayors together and have conversation. The mayor of Chautauqua Hills is really, for lack of a better word, upset about this whole thing. And now he has a plan to help bring all the mayors together, and I've been working on that project as well.
Hey, we're going to take a pause for one second.
I just want to say a few words. I'm going to have to get up first. Because this topic is a point in my side because the warehouses that you're talking about is in my district. And they and a group of people are seriously fighting. And I'm just going to be very frank with you, and you know, if you want to discuss it, it's okay with me. The mayor of Union City has done this, and the other mayors, all the mayors have gotten together. That has not changed anything. This is a plan that was put into effect, that was built twenty years or more. And the bad part about it, and I'm not going to take much time, but I just want to make sure that I get the information out there. The bad part about it is that I don't know anywhere in this state of Georgia. Now, I know in other cities and other states, because I've researched it, where those warehouses are so close that some people can go to their backyard and there it is right there. It's in, one is in front of three schools. And we're talking about diesel fuel and other kinds of pollution. So we're talking about serious economic issues. We're talking about economic, we're talking about environmental justice, and you do not find these issues in Alphabend, Sandy Springs, Dryswell, or any place that.
The A R C plans, as well as the Airtroopers plans, that Southern Crescent, they have a huge space in their warehouse in terms of their comprehensive plans. That is not what we're looking for in this community. Our environment of issues, we suffer from every issue more deeply than any other communities within Fulton County. And we have become the dumping grounds. One of the things that needs to happen with our mayors and our fellow sister cities and our neighbors is, you know, we're looking at zoning right now. And a government of zoning is about, what about the end of your city lines? And it may not affect your residents, but it may be affecting the residents on the other side of that line. So we have to be considerate for all of our community and neighbors because it's just a line. If you can say in my city, it's not affecting my residents, but on the line, five hundred feet behind the line, there are residents of South Fulton. So there has to be a little bit of fairness and consideration for everyone here.
I want to ask you, when you say that you are looking out your front door at the big building, I live in Palmetto, and when I open my door, there's a big building. We did fight with every meeting, but the big building was still there. It was by a third building. So I'm like, how many more fights do we have to fight? We moved, even twenty-six military. We moved to Palmetto because it seemed to have been a very safe place. Fifty-five houses. Now, there's trucks just running in and running out, and we're running to meetings, running back and forth to meetings. We have a big building in front of us. Now we have a crime in our neighborhood. Just this weekend, people broke into our car. When I used to forget to lock, actually lock my door when we first moved in, now there was crime in our neighborhood. The big building was in front. Then we had to fight the other one not to be on the other side. So we just stuck in between because we're doing our, we're supposed to do, but still there is nothing happening.
My friends, it's election day. It's on election day where these decisions are made.
And just like he said, we've been making the same decisions, putting in the same people, the elected officials in the same seat.
That's it.
So you need a new direction.
That's why I'm here.
Exactly.
That is why I am here.
So, exactly. And that's exactly what we need. So change, so change how we decide on who we get the elected officials because it's been the same way for a long time. And that's why Fulton County continues to be stacked. So now we make a new choice and a new change for a new generation.
I just have a quick comment on Palmetto. I spoke with the city council of Palmetto even when I heard the plans were in place. And the question, the answer was that we don't have any money. So when someone comes to us and throw money at us, they're building up the city. That's a problem. Your mayor in Palmetto, he's been going around and who, you know, he's looking for money to support the city as well. So it also goes back to your economic development, what the city council, what they're doing and so forth. Now, I've also spoken to A R C, John Tuohy of A R C, and I said to him, can't you help these cities, including Palmetto? And he said, to me, I don't know if I should say this or not, but he said, they're not listening. And the reason why they're not listening is because if a developer comes and says, here's some money, we need to put this building, so going back to how you solve that, you have a local mayor, you have a local council, state department, and of course, I don't know if anyone knows, Palmetto has the largest number of single-parent African-American women in Palmetto. So now you're talking about even having issues with population getting involved. So that's a work in progress, and those are things that we need to do as a commission to help you live in Palmetto, even though our jurisdiction is going to be minimal in terms of policies, but we can help with the conversation. I just want to clarify.
Let me just say one thing. What you're talking about are brownfields. The city of Atlanta has so many brownfields on the southwest side. That is the biggest problem that you have, and now it's continuing to go south. It's annoying in some neighborhoods where we live. If you don't stand up, it's not going to happen. We have six roles of responsibility at the county level. Development is not one of them. So I don't care who gets up here, it tells you this. They have no stake in the game. They have to go and talk to these cities about what's happening. That's why I'm telling you, what happened behind my house, we had to get together. We had to tell these people, we're going to vote you out. If you're not going to do what they asked, you got to go. And that's the kind of person you need. If I don't do the job for you, you need to tell me I got to go. You don't let me sit there. And that's what needs to happen.
So I've listened to what everyone has said, and when I worked for the county, I was really successful when I worked in the chairman's office of bringing mayors together, bringing the city council votes together, talking with commissioners. So I feel like in this role, I can continue to do that work. And you brought up something that really touched me, you talked about crime and how you hadn't really seen that in Palmetto. And so having worked at Fulton County Government for about four and a half years, while I was there, we had a lot of slider crimes happen. I'm not sure if you guys remember that around the Cascade area. And I was, and it's still happening, and I was a victim of a slider crime at my son's daycare. And so after this meeting, I'd love to talk to you about the initiatives that we did in order to raise awareness around slider crimes and in order to keep our communities safer.
My name is Yvette Shelby. I'm in the Cascade area. And the primary kind of duty as a county commissioner is to create and implement policy. And we've heard a lot, but I ask, what type of policy changes or investments are necessary to create broader economic and employment in the industry? So you talked about a lot of warehouses, so those type of jobs are not going to be living wage jobs? So what type of policies or investments would you do to help drive employment?
I'll take a pause just for one second. Will you go direct questions? Can you make sure this is directed to some of the interests?
It wasn't directed, so anyone up here can answer that question.
Well, focusing on economic development, the county does have an economic development department, but working with the cities is very important and working along the lines of things that they want to see. One of the big issues we need to take care of in Fulton County, obviously, is crime is an issue, obviously. We do have the jails and the courts as well. Our jails are getting overpowered once again. Today's count is a little over twenty-eight hundred, which is over the consent degree of about twenty-five hundred or so where we're supposed to be at. So we have to streamline our courts. A lot of these things will help attract economic development because Fulton County's reputation has to be a little more pristine in terms of quality of life, decent taxes, fair tax assessments, and some of the things that we can control, we're going to work on. A lot of our mayors, who I've worked with, a lot of them since they were city council members over the last twenty years, some of them are so eager to bring in economic development that they will set warehouses. But we have to do community-based economic development, slow and right, not fast and long. The land is going anywhere. Quality development will come, but you have to take the time until that quality development comes in, and not just on the first thing that someone offers you, in detriment to your community.
The question was around what do we, how do we benefit? Is what I also hear is that question.
Yes.
And one of the things that we have to do is to, when it's to economic development, I thought back, and I'm just kidding, I really do have to show you this, February seventh, two thousand fifteen, there was a meeting here in South Fulton that led to creation of Connect South Fulton. We have select Fulton, so we have the mechanisms in place, but this role, the opportunity is unvassal. Yes, to some degree, we don't have the authority constitutionally, but you can use the power of Congress. And that's where choosing the right person with the steel set, and I have those steel sets, I can bring them specifically. And we talk about putting incubators here in our ministry. And when you look at the airport, they have access, we have both airports, Charlie Brown and Atlantic Airport. When you look at airports, they want access to the airports. And what we need to do is step up and say, these are the offerings we have. Mercedes, for example, put their headquarters up north. Guess what? I work for Delta Airlines. Their people are coming in, having a hard time getting up there with Sandy Springs for meetings and then having to leave. We can go and encourage them to put an engagement center, supplier engagement center, right here on the south side, office of South Fulton Department runs, bridges up and down. That's how we bring in the jobs.
I'm just going to say, to make it sweet and simple, again, it goes back to the elected officials. A lot of times, it's not the action, what they do is the motive behind what they do. And we have to make sure that we continue to elect people who are going to be passionate about the job and making sure that we do have people who come out and we hear exactly what you want, hear that here. Just like myself, me and my husband would love to have date night here in South Fulton, but sometimes it's a little bit easier to go to another city who's already developed and have nice restaurants, white table bar restaurants. I would like that here in my city. I don't want to have banquet all over Dollar Tree, but that'd be the only thing that, we have to make sure that we have the meeting and the conversation and continue to have people engage so that we can continue to know, how do we develop it? How do we put the money back here? Because a lot of times, businesses say, you're right, the crime is too high, or it's too risky to buy business here. How do you, we have to work on a lot of the foundation first before we can make it attractive for businesses.
As a former judge, I'm much more of a bottom-line person. The question was about policy development. How do you develop policy to address these issues? My friends, this is where the policy is developed, right here. I have in my hands the current Fulton County budget. This is a one point one billion dollar budget. The line items in this budget represent policy decisions. You have a decision to make. Who do you want sitting at the table where a billion-dollar policy decision are being made? Thank you.
So, you go in the chair for a second. I'm actually a neighbor this year, so I've lived in Cascade for about fifteen years with the Park of Atlanta. And my house was the newest in my subdivision, so a lot of my neighbors are older adults. I want to get the conversation to quality of life and multi-generational family planning, which is what I think other neighborhoods do very well. And I remember when Q T was coming, I think Q T, old Charlie said they would come when Q T came. I remember when Kroger was trying to put the gas station, I want to go next door to gas. I was a bit appalled by the outrage because if you don't develop neighborhoods, you don't attract young families. What happens is neighbors die, neighbors sell their houses, now you have renters. Then you get justification. And so everything we're talking about, the crime and safety and all of this, you don't have an advocate base. We don't have people that are paying taxes, living there and investing. You're going to have a lot of renters, even though the average age is thirty-five, how many of them are renters? Are really trying to get to other parts of the city, are really want to live there. So I want to know from each of you, what is your plan for multi-generational family planning for the next ten years? Because this is also a frustration point for me as a resident.
First of all, let me say, if you talk about the issues that came with that particular development, it was not following the government. You're talking about a situation where you've got a gas station that's going to be on a twenty-four-hour maintenance every week, bringing in trucks and all kinds of stuff, all the stuff that you don't want, they were created. We're talking about all of the restaurants that you could build, but you don't have to visit on the other side. You talk about family development. They've already done it. Six people on the council of the city council of Atlanta lived in that area, plus the mayor. When that issue came up, the first thing they said was, well, we deal with multi-million dollar corporations every day. You're talking about an organization that the stores are rampant in crime. Ms. Botts, who's the current mayor, she didn't stop it, she felt it was good. You've got one up here at Delo Drive right now. The one that they were going to put over here on Fairman Road and Maze Drive, we had to fight that. We're talking about making sure that you get quality development that's going to be enhanced over quality of life. We're not talking about putting something there just to hassle. And that's why the people in my community and yours were fighting. That was, there was a company that was set up to stop gas stations. You've got a big gas station right across the street that they did not want to build. They didn't want to build. And they could have put it right there. You have three gas stations down here. They described it, the fuel station at Kroger, as a fuel station, not a gas station. Your county commissioner and chairman, Mr. John E., went to Peyton Forest to get a gas pump to put that there. That's the problem with all of them. And that's why we should be fighting for some of the things that you all are talking about right now.
When you talk about generational wealth.
You think that's, she had already stood up, she's been waiting to speak?
I'm sorry, I thought you was monitoring, sir. When you're talking about generational wealth, you're always wanting to generate generational wealth. One of the things you have to be aware of is staying put in your community long enough to build that generational wealth. We on the south end of town, we have the most transient populations pretty much in all of Fulton County. Our mobility rates in College Park were upwards of about seventy percent in some of the communities. There's no way to build a solid community. Churches are based on people that live there twenty, thirty-plus years. Schools function when someone's there for many, many, many years. A transitory community does not work that. In terms of convenience stores, there are a hundred and fifty thousand convenience stores in the United States of America. Convenience stores are necessary because ninety-five percent of your gasoline, you have to buy them. However, there's some detrimental things that go on at convenience stores as well that you need to be aware of.
I really want to have a livable, walkable community where we can really age and place. And that's the lens where I come from, working with seniors, having worked in higher education. So all the way youth, all the way to seniors. So to Monica's point, I'm tired of cracks in our sidewalks. I'm tired of not even having sidewalks. I'm tired of pop roads, right? Are you guys tired of the same things that I am? And so what you're speaking about is very important, and these are the things that I care about as well.
Live workplace, it is not just a senior thing, it's everyone. And to answer your question, seventy-eight percent of our homeowners, our residents are homeowners. The jardines of people in the city of South Fulton, most of our districts is our actual home. We don't have our rentals. We have pockets of rentals. Old National Highway is one of them, but I lived off of Old National Highway as a kid. My first home I bought off of Old National Highway. So that's part of it. The other part about it is, I'm a different type of leader. The other part about it is, I'm, I'm a different type of leader. I'm not gonna jump on the back wire when we, the sky is falling. We have problems, we have to address it, and we have to do. But we have white table box restaurants right here in our district. Check my hashtag, hashtag D six Jammies. Have you been to Dallas? Have you been to Baltimore seafood?
I have.
We have restaurants right here. Have you been to Virgil's down Main Street? Have you been to the Crimmins? We have good restaurants, the new bill, honey, and the old bill, honey. We have, why I say that is because it's our responsibility to support those businesses.
Just quickly, I want each and every one of you to take one of these, and the reason why I say that is.
Hi, Mr. Head. We need to go ahead and.
Follow the question. I do not have an opportunity to speak to the question, and I'd like to.
You have to, you gotta move on, you gotta move on.
Well, I need a minute, just like everyone else did. Okay, I just wanted to remind you that as a Fulton County, and going talking about policy and economic development, we now only own Fulton Industrial Boulevard in order to develop. However, the county now has put fifty million dollars in developing that area because over there on Fulton Industrial Boulevard, the airport has been losing clients because it's not a good area. In terms of your question about multipurpose use, we have, uh, South Fulton Parkway Alliance, we have the, uh, Merchants Association on Old National, we have Cascade Merchants Group, we have Meritra that has a comprehensive plan in how we are going to develop this area, bringing things in such as what you're saying. The role of the county is to be on those conversations so that we can help with funding, the policy, or the things that we need in order to make your question happen. So I just wanted to let you know that.
You know the lady right here, she can try to get something.
I have, thank you all. I'm Jill Pope, I am in District Three. And I wanted, uh, kind of a year ago, I went to a meeting, um, talking about a live workplace, and you all were talking about that, um, down South Fulton Parkway, and also a light rail, a bus system, but I haven't seen any of that materialize. The only thing that I have seen is a Martin bus stop at the corner of, uh, South Fulton Parkway. No, not there, um, and right there, South Fulton Parkway Stone and Stone Motte. That's it. It's like the live workplace community just stopped along South Fulton Parkway. And I know a lot of my friends, they always say, come up to Buckhead, and I say, no. We're going to Baltimore seafood and crab, but I want to be able to tell my friends, you know, there's more stuff down South Fulton Parkway. Right now, we only have the Mexican merch guy, the turkey place, and I just want to see more things in our area, and I'm just wondering when this is going to materialize.
So we, we are in the Warford County, South County transactions. Uh, I signed on to the last T-Slot, which brought seven hundred million dollars over some years into South Fulton, the sidewalks along Old National, so on and so forth. Uh, there is a plan for Bus Rapid Transit possibly down in South Fulton Parkway corridor. That is supposed to be a designated lane just for express bus service without stops. One of the good things about BRT, which is as much as we were able to get in terms of some funds that were coming in from the three quarters of a penny, is that, that, in the future, that could be laid for light rail, because it's exclusive, it's exclusive land purchase. But we need transactions. South Fulton's development is going to be potential upon having adequate transportation, but also less trucking. Uh, one of the things the city of South Fulton should look at are impact fees. If warehouses do come in, and they need to come in, in places that are not near residential or appropriate places, Fulton Industrial was made for warehouse, not for residential neighborhoods.
I just want, uh, I'm sorry. I would just want to say to your point of you saying, why is not here yet? And I think you need a commissioner who is going to work to make sure the funds are allocated for District Six and not continue to move further north, and making sure that we do have a live workplace and the plans that are placed out, have their real estate background, having those connections and building the relationship to make sure that. I'm just not out there trying to get another warehouse, like I said before, to make sure that I can line my pockets, but to make sure that it works and makes sense for the community. But making sure that we don't, we have businesses that make sense here as well. We've had a couple, and that was one of my issues, we do have some businesses or, I would say, business offices here, like off of Cascade. Sometimes the parking is the issue. You have buildings that go up, and then you don't have enough parking spaces that's allocated, the land is not appropriate for the type of business. We have to make sure that the decisions that we've made are thought out, making sure that the citizens are involved, and that they're correct the first time, and we don't have to continue to go back and redo them a second time.
This is about vision. You asked about looking further. Look at my flyer, that's Bus Rapid Transit right there. I've talked about this before. But we also have to give the commission who sees the future and who's ready for the future, and engaging in that process. These decisions aren't made in the last five years. I, when I was on the Housing Board of Fulton County, I remember the clearance for that race track up on Camp Reap. It's six years later, it's hot though. We have to get way ahead of it and have a different composition. That's why choosing the right person to be at the table in this conversation. It's about how we look forward and say, twenty years from now, fifty years from now, what do we want District Six to look and feel like? The development, the development that we have, so the conversation around getting to the community, the community meetings? Absolutely, but we can head it off the path way ahead. We gotta get to the meetings before the meetings.
No, I understand about the meetings, because I was in a meeting for the roundabout for Chick-fil-A and the, the emerging diamond pool, it can't create. But that meeting, they said that, I was in the department, there was already funding, so I wondered if they're spending South for the, South Fulton Parkway corridor? Or just?
No, that, that's just, that's just forever. That is still there, we can talk offline. But I'm talking about the meetings before the meetings, because District Six, and you've heard it in my videos, has been left behind. There are meetings happening where we're not invited. That will not happen if we head.
Uh, this is to the entire panel. I think everyone in this room cares a lot about, obviously, the issue, the issues of District Six. Uh, but the reality of it is that there's also the District Four representative talking to its constituents, District Two talking to its constituents, and your responsibility when you get on the broader commission is how do you work with other commissioners that all share the same budget in a way that is in betterment of the broader county that doesn't leave the District Six out of the cold? So what are your strategies in place to be able to work across the aisle with the other commissioners? What, can I finish before you stand up? What are your policies in place so that you're working with the broader commission that improves the county's hold when making sure that District Six is all it's relevant?
And I think I stated that in my introduction. What I have is a backrider real estate, we have to build relationships. Everything about real estate is negotiated and building relationships, and making sure that we have the companies that come here, that we make sure when they have open checkbook, that they're making sure that they're making fun or write a check to our school system to better our school too. Making sure that we build relationships with the council members, the, the commissioners, and the mayors, but making sure that all of such districts, at the end of the day, we can all work together to make sure that we can make sure that District Six is taken care of. But you have to build a relationship, and you have to be related to everyone there.
Uh, one of the things we got to keep in mind, we will be, District Six will be one out of six other commissioners. I've worked together with the commissioners over the years. Also, we will be one out of the six commissioners, there are a total of seven, but there will be six commissioners we will be working with. And I've worked with those six commissioners over the years. I've worked in three Fulton County departments, and I've worked with the mayors in the nine cities in the south as well. It's a partnership, and we have to get equity for District Six as opposed to.
Thank you. Um, the good thing is, I already have the relationships with the commissioners. I served, um, for Fulton County Government for four and a half years, in which I worked in the chairman's office. So I'll be going right in already with really good relationships, not just with the South Fulton, um, folks, but also with, um, North Fulton as well. And so I pride myself in that, in being able to collaborate with folks across parties.
Absolutely, the skill sets that are needed for this are, and vassalship is the partnership. I have global sales and management background. I manage divisions of Fortune five hundred businesses with hundreds of millions of dollars. Those Fortune five hundred people don't hand over their money to people they don't work with and trust. That's what I bring to the table. One of the first things I'm gonna do though is have a conversation with Commissioner Lee Morris, both in my partnership with him and teach him about my brother's keeper, because in the last meeting, he didn't know what that was. That, those are the kinds of things, is just building that relationship, working with people, I'll absolutely do it. Thank you.
I just wanted to say something, and it's, uh, I'm sorry. I'm responding to the question, I haven't yet. So I have actually, I know most of the, uh, commissioners that are already on, uh, the Fulton County Commission at this point. Rob has brought us in, and he brought everyone in, and he shared with us the county policies and procedures and so forth. He did an excellent job, just that's what we call getting up to know us and building relationships, starting from there. He called us in one-on-one. I know just about everyone that's already on the, uh, the commission, except for one lady from Atlanta, I haven't met with her yet. But I actually took it upon myself to go and meet and call some that I were able to talk to, and I wanted to hear their view about the, the commission as it is now. And what do they think about the commission, how it functions, how it operates? What do they need, what are some of the things that they would like to see another commission coming in to do so that we can work together and build relationship? I'm not gonna say what they said, because some of the people they have worked with before, they don't want to work with those people again. So I, I'm not gonna get into details, but there's that one there, but I know that I would be able to work with them.
Thank you very much. Pass its prologue. I'm not gonna talk theory to you, I'm gonna talk actuality to you. Elizabeth Baptist Church on Cascade Road, the zoning for that church was led by me as a member of the board of commissioners. That's why that big, beautiful, functioning member of our community is there right now. When the effort was made to bring night flights into the Fulton County Charlie Brown Airport, I led the effort to stop it, so the residents in the area could sleep at night. Fulton County became the first local government in the history of the state of Georgia to have its own civil rights law. I wrote that law and got it passed unanimously. You look from one end of this table to the other, there is one person here for whom there is a plaque on the wall in the Fulton County Government Center, where all of the commissioners voted to put it there, commending Commissioner Gordon Joyner for his outstanding public service.
Hello, guys. Uh, one of the questions that I have is, uh, your position, what do you look at in terms of creating ordinances? Uh, it seems to me, being a resident here, uh, you took land for fifteen years. I've seen changes of the trash on the ground, uh, every day. Uh, I've seen, like most residents, you know, potholes, that thing, everything is a dominant factor. You have growth, you have the warehouse that creates potholes, that creates, you know, bad emissions. And a lot of those things that I look at is in terms of, South Fulton became a city. I don't know if there was, uh, adequate ordinances. I look at North Fulton, and they have a lot of ordinances that are established. I think as a city, when you have ordinances, those ordinances are to allow, who can allow to build, who can allow to, to do so many different things. So as commissioner, what is your, your focus in making sure that we have created ordinances and ordinances that can be enforced?
We don't have that jurisdiction. That's, those are city decisions to make, because all Fulton County is now incorporated. Each city makes its own zoning and land use decisions. You hit the nail on the head, but those ordinances don't come from the Fulton County Government. They will come from each individual city.
Exactly. We don't have that jurisdiction anymore. The cities do have to take care of that particular responsibility, but that does not stop us from talking to these individuals on your behalf. That's where our responsibility comes in. We have to be that advocate, even though we don't have that responsibility anymore. It's important that we stand up for you, because that's what you're hiring us to do. And secondly, you talk about relationships with the other cities, excuse me, the other jurisdictions. Those jurisdictions, some of them feel as though they pay most of the taxes in the county, and that's not so. That's why you have to have a commissioner that advocates for you and brings information to you about the budget and whatever else is going on before they make a decision.
I just want to mention to you that even though, uh, for example, some of the roads that you're talking about are highways. That's the Department of Transportation, that's the state. But when we were having problems on Highway ninety-two with the traffic and the trucks, I called Emma Darnell at the time, which she was a few years ago, and we talked to her about the traffic. Well, thereafter, we had a death. Someone came out of my subdivision, they got killed, the young lady got killed. So quickly, Emma Darnell came out, she spoke with our community, we talked to her about the needs that we need. She got with Donzella James, this is a state issue now. So she got with Donzella James, I called on Bill James, we all called her. And in about three or four, uh, I wouldn't say about four or five weeks, we had a traffic line at the corner of Butler Road and Highway ninety-two, and that slowed down the traffic to a certain point. My point to you is that even though we have things that are not Fulton County jurisdiction, we can get with state legislature, if it's a state problem, we can help them create ordinance or laws or bills or whatever we need to do.
Communication to the state.
That's right, to get those things done, coming from you. So my relationship with the state legislature is great. I know the folks up there, I can help do that.
Excuse me just a minute, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna try and wrap up about eight-thirty, and we'll ask the candidates if they will stay thirty more minutes to handle all of the personal questions. So I'll ask that everybody that have a question to ask, if, if within these next fifteen minutes, make sure and direct to certain ones to answer, if you'll do that for them.
Good evening. Congratulations to each one of you, citizens, uh, as you have put yourself out to serve the public. Um, I'd like to ask a question to the youngest member out there, my, my, uh, panel. Number one, I know she's caring, I know she's confident, and I know she's capable, because I watched her grow up. And I was so shocked when I rode into the room and did just, uh, two days' work and just even sign up, because she is going, thinking that she can tackle marriage as a new wife and a commissioner together. Well, if you have the opportunity, uh, Mrs. Um, Brad, Mrs. Brad. What if, one, if you just had one thing you could do, what would you say is the most important thing to do in the future for people in, in your age group and citizens and families?
I would say to that, that it's time for us to bring in the younger generation. That is the other one thing. Everybody else has made, made the path for us, they've done the work, but it's a generational thing. You started it, we have to continue it, and you have to bring the younger people in. Make sure that they get opportunities in their school, to make sure they can continue to hold seats that we already have, and can continue to work what you already own. So my passion is to make sure that we bridge the gap between the seniors and the young generation, and making sure that we all can work together, so that we can have a live workplace for not just the younger people, but seniors of their work and play as well. You can't forget about the seniors. A lot of times we think seniors, they're older, they start driving, that's not the truth. They're living longer, sometimes they live better than we do, and they're younger than we, and have more energy. So what are we gonna do to bring everyone together? And again, like I said before, it's, relationships, relationships is everything. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'd like to direct this question toward Mrs. Joyner. Um, and I understand that, uh, this isn't, uh, your first year in this, in that particular position. What would, uh, a day one, or a day one and two, or first week look like for you if you were elected to this position?
You know, I've thought about that also. This election is on a Tuesday. The very next day is a Fulton County Board of Commissioners meeting. I plan to be at that meeting with your support and with your help, and the support and help of others up here at this state. Day one, I'm gonna introduce a resolution, and I guarantee it's going to be adopted unanimously. And it's gonna be a resolution along the lines of my conversation. And it's going to be a resolution along the lines of my conversation. Let's, let's tell everybody. You and I never have had any conversation about this question ever before. But I spent this afternoon talking with Ladisa Oniele Ogu. Do any of you know who that is? Now, do any of you know who that is? She is the Director of Senior Services for the Fulton County Government. The first day.
Thank you.
A resolution for a new senior citizen center in District Six.
Hi, my name is Teresa Gradley. I'm a resident of Marx Park. I am District, in the sixth district and we're right off Fairwood Avenue. Um, I'm just Marable Grimmon, um, St. Marable Grimmon. My question is for you. I'm just looking at your flyer and one of the things that you list on here as a critical area is pursuing mode economic development. What is your plan for pursuing mode economic development? I, I don't think you've got a chance to address that plan. Several questions asked around here. I appreciate that.
Um, thank you for that question. Having worked, um, for Fulton County Government for four and a half years, I had the chance to assert as, when I worked, um, in public relations and I actually worked with Select Fulton. And Select Fulton is the arm of economic development. And so having, um, worked with them when I was at the county, I realized that they were a bit understaffed. And so what I would do first thing is, is staff, add more staff to Select Fulton in order to move economic development along.
Folks, the first thing that we get into office, whoever gets there, you're going to be dealing with the budget. A budget which each and every one of you have had no input as to what's in there, why they, why they're doing certain things. That's important. You need to know what we're doing for you, why we're doing this, that and the other. You should have, be informed before that budget is implemented. So that your input is a complete part of what is being allocated for you and your community. Because you're talking about, again, your quality of life and that is the difference. You just can't go up there and implement policy because they've already, you're coming into business. You know, that's the situation that happens when you die.
I got a quick question. This is just, I mean, one word from each candidate, one word. Um, because I know you're, as a Fulton County Commissioner, you're responsible for policy, budgeting and management. Do you think taxes are, well, maybe two words, too high, about right or too low? Too high, about right, or too low? That's two words, everyone.
Where is that word?
Fulton County taxes. Right. California. Now, just two words, ma'am.
But you don't wear them.
No, 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 ma'am. Sir, ma'am.
I would say about right.
Two words, ma'am.
Too high.
Just right.
About right?
Ma'am.
Um, about right?
It's a billion dollar question.
It's a billion dollar question.
Billion dollar question you're talking about.
I'll give, um, candidates opportunity to actually have, um, their very best, uh, um, that you're talking today. We're going to, um, wrap it up and we're going to give each candidate, uh, one minute to give their closing statements to the community. And afterwards, you have the opportunity to, um, have time to speak to them on individual level. So we'll start here and then one minute, one, one minute, one minute, one minute.
Let's stick to one minute.
Okay. Fulton County District Six is a big district, as you see, a hundred twenty-three thousand, um, residents live in this district. It has some challenges and has some good things. We have some crises. We have youth issues with youth. We have homelessness. We have poverty in some areas of Fulton County. Cascade area has been escalating with poverty. We have, uh, senior citizens that need care. We talk to economic development. I come to you today to share and I hope I share and can share with you on my website, SoniaFrancisWorld.com. You can call me anytime. My phone number is on my website. When I bring to you about thirty-plus years of experience in the community, I worked in Massachusetts. I ran a budget that was six plus billion dollars. I was over all the schools, uh, for restructuring in Massachusetts. I came to Georgia. I participated in every community event I can think of. I'm a business person and I thank you for your vote.
Again, thank you all so much for having us. I really appreciate it. My name is Joe Carron. I'm no stranger to the community. I have served many years. I have a strong working relationship with our community partners, with our state legislature. I pushed to have bills passed on the state level with our colleagues on the state level. I pushed for bills with our county commissioners. I've worked with all of our sister cities. Uh, I have experience in balancing hundred million dollar budgets and managing them twelve years in a row. I've worked in three Fulton County departments over my years of experience. I know Fulton County departments from A to Z. I'm ready to serve and I truly have a passion to serve and work with our people. I want to establish a partnership of protection with our elected officials, our schools, county, city partnership. And that's what true community is about and listening, listening to your concerns and running up the flagpole for you in Fulton County. Thank you so much.
Again, folks, my name is Warren Head. As a candidate for this position, I want to tell you that I have worked in several areas as far as customer service, customer relations, as a manager in all these areas. Basically, that's what you're talking about when you talk about this position. You have to understand that you are the ones that count. You're the people at the top of the organizational chart. We serve you. That is my job or will be my job as a county commissioner, is to serve you, get your, determine your needs and wants and help you to achieve them. As your next commissioner, I hope you take the time, look at my resume and think about when you can go to the polls on this September seventeenth. Thank you so much and I appreciate it.
I'm not going to take a minute. I'm just going to say, remember me because I want to be the new leader, a new vision and a new direction for District Six. It is time for a change and it's going to take a lot to make those changes. I have the youth on my side. I have the energy on my side. And I also have the passion and the intensity to make sure that I represent District Six well. So remember Yashina Kova Rapper, September seventeenth, early voting will be out. That's it.
Thank you all so much for coming. Uh, for over twenty years, I've served this community. As I mentioned earlier, I work in the senior services space in which I'm the Director of External Affairs for National Church Residences. I also worked for Fulton County for four and a half years. I've served as the Director of Constituent Services in which I would receive calls from folks and I would make sure that, um, I was able to get answers to the questions that they had. And I received a lot of calls all the time and I made sure I followed through. I am passionate about people in service, if you can't tell in the twenty years that I have been serving. In order to, um, find out more about me, I would love for you to go to my website, electsojourner.com. And I very much appreciate your vote on September seventeenth and I look forward to talking with you after this forum. Thank you.
Good evening. Once again, I offer you my fifty-three years of experience, my life experience. No, not the years of experience. But I, but I've made all that experience, thirty years, uh, thirty-four years of successful business, government, community leadership. I've done a lot of the good work that we need to do into the future. I'm offering you an ethical, best suited experience person, ready on day one and most importantly, a visionary leader for the future. This election is about electing for the future. What do we want to be like and what do we want to experience? I have the skill sets to work with the other commissioners and the other government. Again, I will not only use the authority of the office, but the power of the office to work with the other divisions and the local environment or sister cities, et cetera, to bring the right jobs, the right services right here in District Six. I believe we are the gem and I will fight for it. You will have that in your advocate commissioner. I come to act with consideration for anybody. Thank you.
My friends, I'm going to come to you with some more facts. That's my conclusion. There are four multipurpose senior citizen centers in Fulton County. One is in Sandy Springs. Two are in District Four. One is downtown. And as a surprise to you, the other one in District Four is the Harriet G. Darnell Multipurpose Senior Center. The other senior center is in East Point and it's the Bowden Senior Center. What is the great omission? There is no multipurpose senior center in District Six. Write it down. Commissioner Gordon Joyner is going to bring a senior citizen center to this district. Read today's paper. I'm going to close on this. Headline says, "State Details Plan to Crack Down on Gangs." I am a lawyer, former judge. I am ready to go to a lawmaking body and make laws to fight crime across our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to say first of all, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank Cook Landy for allowing us, Howard Brown and Women of Change to bring this to you.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
The next thing I want to do is to, uh, thank our candidates because it's really an awesome job. Uh, and I want to say to everybody here that when you offer yourself for public service, that's the ultimate offer. And we should always be thankful and, and really applaud the people that do that because we meet good people. And we have here that shows up, I believe I can count a little bit, seven people. And we want to definitely give them a big round of hands. And I'm going to close and shut up and let you all talk to the candidates, but I want to say this to you. When you go back to your homes, wherever your subdivision is, please share with everybody that this is the most important election that we're going to have in South Fulton for two thousand and eighteen. We cannot stay home. We cannot sit down. We have got to vet these, uh, candidates. Because this will, this seat will determine whether or not we're going to be able to continue and have the type of quality of life that we fought so hard to achieve. Twenty-five thousand people voted for us to have a city. So don't stay home. Don't let your neighbors and friends and family stay home. Talk to them.
Yes.
The voting is September seventeenth.
Yes.
You need to choose one of these people here, but you need to choose correctly. Because once it's done, we can't overdo it again. So I'm going to shut up and let you all meet these candidates and, and continue to vet them. We have chips and water for you, so please have a drink.